Thirty or just after, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, ask for roll call please.
Here.
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 I'm gonna ask Max to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we got meeting minutes for our regular meeting November 11th, special meeting November 18.
I move for approval of the regular meeting minutes from November 11th and also the special meeting minutes of November 18th as written.
A second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 11th, special meeting on November 18th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. Alright, thank you for all that are in attendance and all those that may be listening or watching online. Appreciate your attendance this evening. Nobody signed up for public comment? We'll move on to the agenda and ask for an adoption, a motion.
That's a move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then for the adoption of the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. Alright, eight point one, school of the month. Good evening.
They must be singing, just those two.
Good evening. Is this thing on? Good evening, thank you, good to see you all on this somewhat balmy December day. So here to talk about Prairie View, lots to talk about, but I just wanna start tonight by just kind of acknowledging the start of our 24-25 school year. It was a little unique. Want to give a big shout out to Mr. Tyler Schmidt, PE teacher at Washington who filled in as our interim dean of students while Kaitlyn was gone on her maternity leave. And as you can see, this is Kaitlyn and not Tyler. But he did a fantastic job filling in, staff and students were really sad to see him go. You can see some pictures there of his last day, we did a send off for him among other things. He had spent some time at Prairie View a few years ago as our PE teacher, one of our, the traveling PE teacher that spent a lot of time at Prairie View. So a lot of the kids and staff knew him, but you know, he came, he came in with a good spirit, learned a lot, and he's got a bright future ahead of him. So I want to acknowledge Tyler Schmidt. Also want to acknowledge Kaitlyn, she, you know, he, he wouldn't have done as well without her meeting with him and collaborating with him and talking with him and getting him prepared and set up to be successful. There was a lot of work that was done over the summer just to kind of get him up to speed. And Kaitlyn filled him in on the things that he was kinda, kinda take ownership of. So shout out to Kaitlyn for doing that and welcome back to Kaitlyn.
Welcome back.
She's tired. First thing I want to touch on is our school success plan goals, so I'll touch on two of them and Kaitlyn will touch on one. Our first one is vocabulary, so our goal is that on iReady we'll increase our proficiency from three, by three percent from seventy-two to seventy-five percent. That's from last spring to then spring of twenty-five. Our subgroup is the students that were below grade level in the vocabulary strand. We want them to move proficiency level or placement level. So if they're like three grade levels below, we want them to be up to two grade levels below, at least that. Obviously, if they grow more grade, but really focusing on those students and making sure that they're making the movement. So they're not as, as far behind as they currently are. Checking in on that, so last year, or at the beginning of this year, sorry, we were thirty-eight percent proficient in the vocabulary strand on iReady. And when you look at historical data in the fall in the vocabulary strand, back when we started this, in the fall of twenty-one, we were at thirty-two percent. Fall of twenty-two, we were at thirty-two percent, last fall, we were at thirty-six percent. So our proficiency has increased each fall. So, but, so just wanted to share that context with you, so you know, when you see thirty-eight, you're like, wow, that's not a lot of kids. But historically, that kind of is higher than where we've been and we've been able to see that get up into the seventies. And we're pushing for mid-seventies by the end of the school year. Our teachers do track this every quarter. In addition to iReady, they, the teachers have created grade level common assessments to track that, monthly or quarterly, depends on the grade level. You can see there our percentage is seventy-four percent. It's not exactly apples to apples, so the grade levels will, will determine kind of the vocabulary that their students should know and will track that based on what they've taught and/or it might be prefixes, suffixes, word parts, it might be just actual words. So it's not necessarily apples to apples, but we're at seventy-four percent, I would anticipate that score to go up as well. But we're, you know, I think in the future, we'll look to see how we can progress monitor in a more consistent way. So that when we're looking at how are our kids doing, it doesn't look like, you know, right now seventy-four percent looks like we're about to meet our goal, but it's not the iReady. It's something different, so.
Okay, we're gonna take a look now at math, so a very similar goal. We're going to try to overall increase our proficiency scores in math by two percent. So we were hoping to jump from eighty percent of our students proficient to eighty-two percent. And again, this will be measured by iReady. Our subgroup by the end of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we want one hundred percent of students that are below grade level to increase their overall placement by at least one placement level. That's kind of what Brandon was talking about, where if they're below grade level, that we hope that they go up to at least on grade level and so on and so forth. As of December, our math proficiency, like Brandon said, doesn't look super great, but when we look back at the historical data, in twenty-one, when we started this, we were twenty-four percent proficient. And then in twenty-two, we were twenty-six percent proficient, twenty-three is twenty-six percent proficient. So right now, we're actually above where we have been previously. For our progress monitoring, we gave our classroom teachers the choice to either create an assessment based off of the essential standards that all of the grade levels teach each module and block when they are in their math. But we also gave them the opportunity that if they were noticing that there was an essential standard that was lower when they gave the iReady in the fall, they could base their assessment off of that specific essential standard. So some of our classrooms are doing more on their assessment, some are doing a little less, but they're still measuring what they believe is best to determine if our students will be proficient in math. So as you can see, it's a little closer in numbers than our vocabulary assessment. So our numbers come back at thirty-seven percent proficient right now with our teacher-created assessments. And like Brandon was saying, we're hoping that maybe next year, we can create an assessment that's a little more apples to apples. Because right now, this is measuring something a little bit different than iReady is.
So what are some key action steps we've done? So the first two are vocabulary, so at every, either every staff meeting or every in-service, we are doing professional learning. Staff is engaging in it around all of our SSP goals. So for vocabulary, we've been learning about different vocabulary instructional strategies to implement and high-leverage practices to improve student vocabulary learning. Some of that is looking at just our, our curricular resource, the HMH into reading and what are some high-leverage practices that are kind of emphasized throughout all of our modules. Our EL teacher, Ms. Merkel, went through and looked at K-two and three-five, all the different modules and pulled out what are the different strategies like context clues, synonyms, antonyms, things that we can use to teach vocabulary. And so we're just pulling out some of the ones that we know are, show up a lot in K-two and a lot in three-five, so that we can really hammer home those high-leverage practices. Also, we've learned about integrating morphology concepts into the curriculum as well. So you know, how, how are words built and how does that help us learn how to identify and define a word that maybe we don't know, but there are word parts that we do know. So we've done a lot of work with that, staff have engaged in article reading, we've, you know, practiced some of these strategies together at in-service or staff meeting time. So that's what we've done for vocabulary.
For math, we are focusing on a Building Thinking Classrooms book study. So this is something that as a district and especially at the elementary level, we started about two years ago, where we had someone come in and they taught our elementary staff about vertical whiteboards. And we really took hold of that as a staff and our teachers really wanted to work more on that. So this year, we're actually looking at the entire book of Building Thinking Classrooms. And we're going through each module, each of our classroom teachers has a copy of the book. We're not asking them to read it, but if they want to look at it as we kind of go through each chapter, what we're doing during our professional development, during our staff meetings or in-service, is we're giving a general idea of here's what the chapter is saying and then how our teachers can actually apply that in their own classrooms. And then we're also aligning those with the eight standards for mathematical practice. And this is something again that we started about two years ago and something that we're continuing to focus on. So we're seeing how those mathematical practices align with our Building Thinking Classroom's book study. We're also reviewing measurement data and geometry and we're looking at the common core standards from previous and current grade levels. And then we're reviewing those throughout the school year. So we've noticed that with iReady and often with Forward, we're asking our students a lot of questions on the measurement data and geometry strands, but we're not actually teaching what those strands are until closer to the end of the year. So we're seeing that our data is showing that our kids don't know it yet. So instead of just getting it all in right before the exam comes up, we want to actually start teaching it earlier and then continuing to circle back through it throughout the year, so that when it does come time for our spring iReady and our Forward, our, our students know what they're doing and they've had the review of it and they feel confident in doing what they should need to know how to do.
Our third goal focuses on, it's a climate and culture, but it really focuses on our collaborative culture. So teachers working together to serve students. So this is part of the, we give an, an annual PLC continuum survey to our staff at the end of the school year. It asks the same questions every year, so that we can see, you know, historically, are there areas that we're growing in, areas that we need extra support in? And one of our lower areas, and again, it wasn't like super low, ninety-seven point one percent of our staff felt like we were doing a good job. But we want to get that to a hundred percent because we want to have all of our staff feeling like we're working together to best serve students. So we, we don't give the whole survey quarterly, we just give the one question that is aligned to this. And so in December, or actually in November, after the first quarter, we gave it in seventy-six percent answer to four or five, which essentially means like we're doing, we're doing what we need to do. It's institutionalized in the way we do things. I think one of the things that might indicate why it's a little lower than where we ended last year, we've got several new staff members. And a couple of them are, are part of, you know, our Mates, our music teacher and our PE teacher, they don't necessarily have a department at Prairie View. So this was early on and so we've, as a guiding coalition have talked, how can we get everybody involved and how can we build culture between, especially those teachers that maybe don't, like a music teacher who doesn't necessarily have another music teacher in the building to go talk to or to collaborate with weekly like our fourth grade teachers do or our kindergarten teachers do. One other thing that we've done this year to address some of that is our literacy support teacher, Mrs. Lindy, and our math support teacher, Mrs. Vessi. When we have her, which is every other quarter, they're joining our weekly collaborative team meetings. So that they're hearing what the kids are learning in math and reading, so that when they're pulling students to give them additional support, like an intervention, they can, they can do what they need to do to build up some foundational skills, but also help to transfer some of that knowledge, how they can transfer that back into the classroom. Because I think what sometimes we see is students can, a lot of times make progress in an intervention, because they're working on discrete skills. But then when you send them back to the classroom to work on something that's more at grade level, they, that's not transferring. So we, we want to have them a part of those conversations as well. Also, they're experts in, in reading and math and instructional strategies and to have them at the table to talk about what can we do differently or what can we try, what can we do to enrich, is a great way to get everyone working together. So next, just want to touch on, this is our, our mission, we changed it af, before, last school year. So this is our, our mission is Panthers Together, Achieve Wild Success, so it spells P-A-Z, elementaries love acronyms. And this is easy for kids to remember, it used to be like two sentences and it was just hard. I think even staff didn't memorize it. So this is easy to remember. So just want to touch on what does this look like, how does this feel at Prairie View? So this is some pictures of our, mostly of our students, you can see our students working together. And what we have, and I'm sure a lot of other elementaries have it too, we have buddy classrooms. So like our kindergarteners are buddied up with a third grade, first grade with fourth grade, second grade with fifth grade. And four K is buddied up with fifth grade, because we only have two, two teachers in second grade this year. So at least monthly, they're getting together and a lot of times, the older kids will come to the younger kids' classrooms and they'll read books to the kids or they'll work on a project together. It's not something that takes us a super long amount of time, usually about a half hour, but monthly, they're coming together just to, just to build culture and to collaborate and build community. So most of the pictures you see there with kids, all the pictures actually you see there with kids are buddy classroom time. The picture, I don't think this will work, no, probably not on the screen. The one right underneath the word together is a picture of our staff at one of our in-service days. It's hard to see the, the poster, but it's engaging in some vocabulary work. So looking at a vocabulary, they had to pick a vocabulary word in their group and then they had to find all these different ways to kind of display or show that word. It was a synonym or an antonym, it could be a picture, what are the prefixes and suffixes, use it in a sentence, those kinds of things that we want our kids to be doing. We engaged our staff in doing the same activity, so that they can take that back and work on it with students.
Alright, the next slide is achieve. So some of the things that you'll see on here is we have our positive phone call logs. This is something that we started a few years ago, but this year, we switched it just a little bit to make it a little more engaging for our students. But this would be something where a student could get a shout out from a staff member and they turn in what's called a positive office referral. And so it gets turned into Brandon and I, and it can either be for academic achievement, it could be for trying with their academics, just even giving academic effort. It could be for being respectful, responsible, safe, all of those things. And then we get to make a phone call home to the parents and then they get to sign the poster and they get a little sticker. Up in the corner, you'll see some of our students making a flower for kindness day. So some of our third graders, they made pipe cleaner flowers and then they deliver them around the school. We have our Stretch for Greatness wall and almost all of the students in our building either have a fingerprint or a handprint on that wall. And that is to acknowledge and honor the students who either met their typical growth for their iReady spring score or their stretch growth. So their typical growth is what we would hope for all of our students to make, because it would be typical. And then our stretch growth, this one is one that we really want to highlight, because it's a lot more difficult to make our stretch growth. So if a student makes a stretch growth, they're going above and beyond what that typical growth would look like for the year. And they get to put a handprint on the wall. So we started doing this two years ago and we have our whole wall across from our learning land filled up and then the wall across from that wall also now filled up. And then you'll see that we have members of our student council, so we have our student council that's run by Mrs. Bertel and Mrs. Debit. And they collected items for the food drive. We have our ASL club, which is led by Ms. Lerner. And she is an interpreter for one of our students in second grade, so she does ASL club for our second and fifth graders. And then we have an assembly, we do in our all-school assembly once a month, where we have our students recognized as VIPs or very important Panthers. The skills that we worked on for September, October and November were respectful, responsible, safe, which is our three social, emotional learning goals that we focus on at Prairie View. And then our VIPs always get to do a fun minute-to-win an activity and this one, I believe, was mummy wrap? Was mummy wrap, where they got to wrap their teacher in a mummy as fast as they could. And then in the bottom, this is something new that we started this year and this is key club. So we actually have some members of the high school key club coming down and starting that with some of our fourth and fifth grade? Third, fourth and fifth grader. So it's a little bit different than our student council, just some different focus, but still an area that our students are really excited to be about and just some leadership opportunities for them. And then we have our wild, so as you can see up here, we have, in the corner, we have a turkey where the students made what they believed was their kindness turkey? Gratitude turkey, where they would write kind of some things that they were grateful for, each classroom got it and then we hung it in the multipurpose room. Then we have the kindness monsters down at the bottom. So this is something that we're doing as an SEL team, where each month, we're doing a different focus. Each classroom gets to make some kind of poster and hang it up. We have our Mr. Kraus getting slimed in the middle for our fun run at the end of the year. Last year, we raised over twenty thousand dollars, which is the most that we've ever raised for our fun run. We have our girls on the run, this is something that is very near and dear to my heart. So it's a knockoff of the girls on the run, we call it soul sisters. So any of the students that are in grades three, four and five can join. And we basically practice together for about six to seven weeks. And then the culminating five K happens, where we do a five K around Prairie View. It is mostly geared towards girls and building confidence and empowering them. And this is our, this will be our third year doing it and the, the girls just absolutely love it. And then we have our fall festival up there. So we had our, second year of doing our fall festival, where we had lots of games, we had a bounce house and some crumbled apples and apple cider. So just last of things that engage our community and our students, making it a place that they love to be.
So last but not least, just talking about what, the success part. So just a few things to highlight as far as Prairie View's success over the last few years. Our school report card score this year was up to ninety-two point nine and that significantly exceeds expectations, which is up from ninety point five from last school year, or the last report card. This puts Prairie View in the top two percent of Wisconsin public elementary schools. If you look at, you, you can do a list of all the schools elementary-wide, we're twenty-eight out of one thousand four hundred and sixteen. Of any school that's considered an elementary school that gets a report card. If you look at just public schools, we're twenty-third. We were just recognized by the US News and World Report as a best elementary school for twenty-twenty-five. I know it's weird with twenty-twenty-five not being until next year, but it's, it's for this year essentially, or last year's report card, which puts us in their rankings at fifty-seven out of one thousand nine hundred and thirty-one schools. Something you've probably already heard as well, is we're a solution tree model PLC school. So that's an, an organization that works with schools on the professional learning communities, RTI, some of those systems that we use to support our students. So we achieved that solution, the model PLC school back two years ago. And then just last year, we were considered, recognized by Curriculum Associates, who's, who kind of runs iReady as an iReady super stretch school based on the stretch growth of our students last year, from winter to, or from fall to spring, so. That's all we got, no, nobody's singing and I'm not dancing, so. Any questions?
I don't have a question, I just, I wanted to make a comment. I'm, I'm really glad you used the word morph, morphology. I was kind of interested in that, on your, on your vocabulary section there. Interesting, but I want to thank you, I want to thank Prairie View, amazing job all the way through. And I, one question, if you have a child who is achieving higher than their grade, how do you approach taking care of the needs of that child?
I would say it looks a little different than maybe it did ten, fifteen years ago, but a lot of that is, is tackled by our classroom teachers and/or our math interventionist, math support teacher, Mrs. Vessi, you know, looks to support some enrichment as well. But through, through our workshop, kind of in ELA in math, when students are working either independently or with the classroom teacher, that's where the teacher might infuse some enrichment or some extension to students. Heidi Graff, our fourth grade teacher, one of our fourth grade teachers, she's also our district elementary enrichment coordinator. So she's been putting on, she's tasked with putting some activities together for enrichment for students. It's open to all students, but it's another enrichment kind of project-based activity that students can do. This core, this semester, they're working on writing a fiction book. So it's like third through fifth graders, they have like a template to follow, they have a rubric, they have kind of what needs to happen, what the story needs to include. And it's scaffolded based on third, fourth and fifth, but it's an opportunity for students to extend and utilize their written ability. And then the plan is for those books to be published and displayed in our school libraries for all students to be able to read. Those are a few ways.
The, if you go back to that wild slide, is that Miss Dwyer throwing slime at you or what? Can you just kind of explain what kind of happened there?
Yeah, well, so we did a, I think it was a coin challenge, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, where students who raised the most coins got to choose who to pie. And I was a little overzealous with how I pie'd Mrs. Dwyer. I just held it there a little too long. She survived, don't worry. But I think there was a little payback.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there was also some glitter in there and those who know me know that I hate glitter.
Well hey, I just would like to say, you know, as a parent of a Prairie View Panther and the last, you know, being involved with the school the last six years that have flown by, just what a wonderful job that, that y'all have done. You know, my son is very, very thrilled to, to go to school. He speaks very highly of all the events and the interactions that happen at Prairie View. So I just want to definitely say thank you and commend y'all on a, on a wonderful job and continue to, to push and, and, you know, serve them students well, but very, very thankful as a parent to have you guys and your staff, so thanks.
Thank you.
You guys are doing so much awesome stuff, but one of the things that you talked about that I was just really impressed with and you mentioned it in a couple of different ways, was the times that you have the younger kids working with the older kids, whether it's the high school kids coming in for K Club or whether it's the, the inter-grade level thing. I love it that it's not just, you know, kindergarten and fifth grade, but you've got it for everybody. So what a great opportunity for all of them.
Yeah, our kids love it. And teachers do an amazing job of finding things that are fun for them to, it's either the kindergartners sharing their latest writing project or the fourth, the fifth, you know, older kids reading to the younger kids. So they, they make it great and that's, I think that's a testament to the time our teachers put into building the community that we have.
Yeah, thank you.
Isaac, you sure you don't want to make sure everybody understands how you thought about the food?
I'll save that for the board engagement part.
Alright, anybody else got any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have high school overnight trip requests. Good evening, Mr. Gerber.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, first of all, I hope you all received your Board of Education athletic passes. I apologize for those getting to you so late. As soon as I got them printed, I had them sent up here, so I, I wanted to make sure you had those in your hands for the winter season, so hopefully you have those with you. I mentioned the last time I was here, I believe in September, presenting on the overnight and out-of-state trips, that there may be a few others. And so here we are. A lot of these trips, actually all of these trips, are trips that we take typically every year. As you can see, most of them are CTSO groups, so FCC LA on there, they have their state leadership and their national leadership conventions. Especially with the national leadership convention, that'll be dependent on qualification to that. This year, it's in Orlando, I believe last year it was out in California, if I remember right. HOSA, under new leadership with Alex Betcher and Dustin Baldassari, their state competitions in the Dells this year. Again, numbers vary based on what they know now. John Ganski and Mackenzie Chico have their. John Ganski and Mackenzie Chico have their FFA group going up to Minnesota State University up in Marshall, Minnesota as part of the agriculture bowl. They usually do something to this effect each year. Max could probably talk a little bit about that. And then Kyle Hendrickson has a band trip down to Platteville that they've gone to the last few years, a tri-state honors, where that, their band or the, the students that they take down with them get to collaborate with other students from across the state and the other adjoining states. I know I've, we've got friends that are music teachers down in Cuba City and they participate in that. It's a wonderful event and you get to see this massive band come together and, and work together. And they get some great learning and, and teaching opportunities there. So again, I, very similar to requests earlier this fall. All I'm looking for is approval on these. And I should mention, a lot of these costs, a lot of these participation numbers, they're estimates at this time. This, this approval is looking to just get the ball rolling, get the approval in place so that when these qualifications happen, we're able to move on them at that time.
I, I just have a question. Can you tell me again what HOSA is?
That's our health and occupational group there. So they're working with our anatomy students. That's a very popular group. In the, in the last few years, actually the first year I had, I think their numbers were close to 50 students. And a lot of those students that take that end up going into college and, and taking classes towards jobs in the healthcare industry. And that's, that's an area that we're obviously looking to grow over time. Certainly the, the need is out there. So if we can provide some sort of training or dipping their toe in the water before they get out of high school, that's a plus for us, keeping us all healthy.
You feel good about your chaperone procurement given the, you know, depending on the numbers, obviously?
Yeah. So we always require, if we have co-ed students, that we have co-ed chaperones. So that's a must. And then as you see, most, in most of these cases, those advisors are jumping in. They know when they sign up to do these that they're going to be at these events and it's a big deal for them. So again, a lot of these groups have had a lot of fun, but it's also been very rewarding. And some of these, we've been able to bring back some great honors that our kids have done great projects and great works that we're able to celebrate when they come back.
A couple of these things are newer, newer organizations or newer trips, more opportunities. I know the, the top one is something, FCC LA is fairly new for us, like maybe two years, HOSA's a little newer, but these are great opportunities for all of them.
Yeah, our CTSOs overall, that's something that we take great pride in. I know Mr. Tronson takes great pride in that, having led a few of those in the past. You know, again, it's, it's an opportunity to extend the classroom into some of these organizations and get these kids thinking about what they want to do when they get out of college or, or take classes or go to a school that's going to help them in those certain areas. I've, I've mentioned it here before, we'd like to grow in this area. There are some CTSOs out there that we, we don't offer yet, that we certainly like to get more involved in. And that's something that I'm constantly talking with our staff of, of what more opportunities we can provide for our students. You'll notice that, and it's a document I'll share with, with Mr. DiStefano here at the end of the year, our, our participation numbers and how much our kids are involved with. It, it just, it's funny how this, the kids, they're, they're in athletics, they're in the arts, but they're also in these clubs and organizations. We've got students who are in seven or eight different groups. I'm trying to figure out when they have time to go to class. But they're, they're involved with our groups. They're involved in our community. They're involved in our school. And we know that when kids are involved and they're engaged, they do better. And so the, providing these opportunities not only is good for the kid, but it's good for our learning community.
I make a motion, we approve these trips as presented.
All right. We have a motion of second then to approve the trips as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign.
Thank you.
You're welcome. District safety drills report.
Good evening. Under Wisconsin Act 143, which was established in 2017 and created the Office of School Safety under the Department of Justice, all Wisconsin schools are required to submit documentation to the Office of School Safety on five categories. Maps and blueprints, school safety plans, school threat assessments, school safety trainings and violence drills. The violence drills are mandatory, one per year. After the drill is complete, the principals write up an evaluation of the drill, talk about things that went well, things that we could improve on. And then those evaluations get brought to the superintendent and school board for review. And then once that is approved and signed, we need to upload those to our share file before January 1st. So those evaluations were in your board packet and we're looking for approval of those as written.
Any questions, Troy, related to the reports that were in the board packet?
I'll move to approve them as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion of second then to approve the district safety drills report as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
All right. That moves us on to reports presented by Board of Education, starting out with 9.1, Student Rep Report.
Okay. So the month of December has been a big one for the district with many notable events occurring. The district-wide food drive was, was a success. We collected over 9,560 pounds of food from seven different schools. The high school led the way collecting the most, just beating out defending champions Prairie View Elementary. The food was distributed to PAVE, Church Health Services and other area food pantries. This year as part of my role as student representative, I'm taking the opportunity to visit other schools in the district to provide experience on reports firsthand. This month I focused on the middle school. I visited a social studies classroom in action. At the end of class, they were awarded Culver's custard along with the rest of the seventh grade for collecting the most items in the middle school for the food drive. Later in the day, they were able to, later in the day, they were able to close out the Tuesday before Thanksgiving with floor time. I watched seventh grade play volleyball and house versus house competitions. There was a tie for first between two houses, so they combined to form a student team to play versus the staff. The staff did win though. It's a wonderful activity that happens to contribute towards community building as well as some good friendly competition. Last week I had the opportunity to return back to the middle school and attend a student council meeting. At their meeting, they made final preparations for their dance that night, including an activity where each student there made a snowflake to hang up. They also finalized dress-up days for their holiday spirit week, which is coming up, and more ways to get the school in the spirit before break. They then discussed bringing what items for the upcoming breakfast they host for the teachers titled Breakfast with the Elves. And finally, they signed up for shift selling candy canes during lunch as a fundraiser. It's nice to see how active and eager to participate in activities to enhance school culture these kids really are. Another club they have at the middle school is called Builders Club. That is based on giving back and serving the community. They've been working to organize toys collected from the toy drive and also making cards for nursing homes and assisted living facilities in the area. It was a unique experience for me to go to the middle school and I look forward to visiting with other schools in the coming months. Winter athletics at the high school are in full swing and teams are having high success. The boys varsity basketball team set a school record for largest margin, margin of victory, beating Milwaukee Lifelong Learning Academy 108 to 39 with a 69-point victory. The girls' basketball team also brought home a big win last week, Friday, with a 55 to 53. And Emma Jolka hit a go-ahead three-pointer with under 10 seconds in regulation. Girls' hockey is on a two-game winning streak, shutting out Badger and beating Fond du Lac 4 to 3. Wrestling won their first duel last Friday night against Oregon, 41 to 24. And over the weekend, senior Easton Warden earned his 100th win at the high school. Finally, the boys' hockey team is not only having success on the ice, but also helping out the community. They had their annual teddy bear toss event. At their game against Sun Prairie, they had a teddy bear toss where spectators were able to throw teddy bears onto the ice and then those were later donated to the toy bank. Thank you hockey for helping support those in need. Finally, holiday events are in full swing across the district with Beaverdame FFA having a stop at Santa's Hometown Holiday Adventure where they utilize their facilities and animals to put on a live animal experience, allowing children to see and pet animals as well as ask any questions. We also had many different organizations involved with the parade and the band played wonderful music to spread cheer in the community. There are many concerts coming up and other music events to get prepared for the holidays. So be sure to check out the district calendar for upcoming events that you won't want to miss.
Max, you want to give us a summary of your past experiences? I mean, obviously we just approved the agriculture, FFA group going to some competitions. Your past experience in the agriculture bowl, can you talk about some of that?
So I have never actually attended the agriculture bowl, but I've done similar things. So what they're going to be doing there is participate in career development and leadership development events. So the leadership development events, those are focused on growing as a leader and in public speaking. So there's ones for all different levels starting at middle school. And so I've competed in three different ones. The creed speaking, which is freshman year, you recite the FFA creed and you go in front of judges and then answer questions on like how you interpret it. And then so I, when I was, did that, I took second place at district and top two move on to sectional. So I moved on to the sectionals where I also placed second and you have to win your section in order to move on to state. And then my sophomore year, I participated in a prepared speech. So there, it's just like it sounds, you prepare a four to six-minute speech and then you give it before a panel of judges. Then they can see it, they analyze your speech and then ask you questions. So I've also done that where that's, I did mine on supporting local agriculture production and the benefits of that. And I believe I took third at districts there. And then last year I competed in discussion meets. So that's where we get in a group and there's six that are competing at a time and you just discuss a topic in agriculture and you have to prove that you can facilitate that one. And I had success last year and I ended up winning state for that. So that's only a statewide. So they're doing competitions such as those or else career development, which is analyzing specific careers. So anything from poultry valuation, if you're going to that, to agriculture sales, which is what I compete in. There's just many different opportunities for that. So that's what the egg bowl is. And so in Minnesota, there's going to be four states. So it's kind of like a regional event where people can compete there.
I also appreciate you getting out to the other schools as well, taking the opportunity to visit some other schools. So we get some insight, obviously, from the student body just outside of, just not at the high school, but at the other schools. So appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree with Chad on that. I was going to say the same thing. I think that's very brave of you to go to the other schools sometimes, especially probably start with the middle school. But good job. I think they probably appreciated it too, that I gave them an opportunity to tell you about the school and you saw it firsthand. So good.
Yeah. And it's interesting for me because I went to a parochial school, St. Stevens, growing up. So I didn't go to public school until high school. So I've never been in the schools or like seen how they run. So it's been interesting to see how that's working.
Any other questions, comments for Max? All right, Max, thank you. Operations and teaching did not meet. Next meeting for committees is January 27th. We did, however, have a workshop on November 18th where we talked about facility and had a facility discussion post a successful referendum. And I'll ask John to give a high-level summary of that workshop.
Well, we met in November 18th. We met, I should say. Mr. DiStefano and Mr. Cashman gave us an updates on facilities planning. We're reviewing future and state district facilities, including the five-year plan, 10-year plan and the annual maintenance budgets. Once the referendum projects will be going through, the average, average age of our buildings will be about 50 years old. We also looked at phases of construction for Washington and, and the middle school. Talked about key stakeholder meetings where our core evaluation team, it will, which will be some administration along with our, our construction people and two board members. And I think at this time it's going to be Joanne and myself. And then we talked about how we're going to update the progress of those meetings and community involvement, board involvement. We went through some financial planning stuff and things like that. So that's just a quick summary of what we did. And I don't know if anyone else has got anything else they want to add that we were, while we were there, that was, was at the attendance of the meeting.
Anybody else have any comments regarding the workshop? We did, I know there was some questions regarding overall communication and how we wanted that to flow. And I think we're going to at least start out with flowing that through committee, operations, and then having a high-level summary report come from operations to the board on a monthly basis. So we'll see how that works and if there's a need to change it or do something different, we can obviously talk about that. So.
So the, the monthly, basically, community brief, those will begin next month. So when we do that, the committee, operations committee, will have an opportunity to, to review that draft. That comes out, that'll have information from the architects, the construction managers, and then we'll update the community on finance-related items as well, just to keep everybody in the loop. So that'll be coming out monthly and then it'll be posted to our website. So people can go back and look at that. The, the next kind of formal engagement for the board will happen either in January or February. The timing depends on some of the information that we need to bring back, the finance plan, so the detailed finance plan. So that'll come forward to the board. And then we'll start with schematic design for the middle school in February and March. And we'll start doing bond issuances in the spring and beyond. So. Every month moving forward, there'll be some kind of touchpoint or update. Certainly all other business needs to take place and, and be a priority. The work in the classroom is the most important thing we have going on, but it's important that we update folks on a regular basis and be the best stewards we can of the investment they've made.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Mark. With that, we'll move on to 9.5 and 9.6. We'll just throw those together. Any board engagement or recognitions anybody wants to bring forward?
I was there for the basketball game and I felt a little bit bad for the other team. It was, it was quite a blowout on Thursday. But, and then the pep band played. So they were fun. And the holiday parade, there's a lot more groups that participated this year because it, it kind of went on a long time. So there was a lot of, it's good to see a lot more community involvement and stuff like that. So. And then we were at the bowling alley yesterday watching the boys and girls bowling. The boys went 1-1. I'm not sure about the girls, but we're 7-1 for the season so far. Watertown's kind of tough. They're really good. We can get them one of these times, but.
Anybody else?
I went to the Prairie View, the coffee chat for a little bit, which is where we got the kids in the kitchen, made the fruit pizza. That was really good. Enjoyed that. Some, some kiwi was out there. I like kiwi a lot. That was good. And then I also had an opportunity to have lunch at Prairie View a little earlier in the, in the month. I had lunch with the fifth graders and let's see, what did we do that day? Oh yeah, I went with the, the pretzels and cheese cubes, but then I got there that, that the lunch lady says, "Hey, I don't think you're going to want these pretzels." There's not quite a whole lot. She's like, "You should try the hot dog." So I was like, "All right, I'll have the hot dog." So go through the line and load on my plate, some good fresh peas, carrots with ranch. I get my hot dog, good old beef hot dog and a wheat bun. Really delicious. So then I get the, then they give you a couple of pickle spears. So I made essentially like a Chicago dog, you know, you throw that right on there. And the, the kids were, they were, they were interested to see that whole deal, but.
Not at all, just, just interested?
Yeah, just interested. I've never seen that happen before, but. So that was good. I got a chance to just kind of walk around and talk to a bunch of, a bunch of the fifth graders. We talked basketball, we talked school, I talked all sorts of stuff. So they seem to be in good spirits. And, oh yeah, the other thing too, I saw, what, you guys had some, why, you guys had some kids in the kitchen making lasagna over at your place here? Yeah. Yeah. Man, I gotta, I gotta get in on that text thread too, one of these days if I could. So, but, yeah, it was, that was my engagement. I look forward to though getting out soon here to, to all the events, the basketball and hockey and wrestling, stuff like that, so.
I think next year, we're going to make an official line item on the agenda for a food review by Ike. Look forward to that.
I just wanted to take a minute, both in Prairie View's report and, and Mr. Gerber's report tonight, a lot of the things that our kids are doing are, they're doing because our staff is facilitating those, from the ASL club at Prairie View, which I think is just awesome, to a lot of these high school events and new high school events. So, I just really want to recognize the staff that outside of their normal school day signs up and does these extra things, which just really enhance the learning for our students. And it's just exciting to see all the opportunities, regardless of what the interests of the kids are, that we've got something for them to do, so.
And I'd like to piggyback off that real quick because I couldn't agree more. And Ms. Billy was here a little earlier and I wish I would have said something to her, but Ms. Billy was my son's kindergarten teacher. And from, you know, I, I really believe that the job that she did really instilled, you know, a love of learning in not only my son, but in all those students there. So, I really definitely agree with that. The staff is so important.
And I'd also like to throw our students in there too. I mean, if you look at, you know, our students are obviously very, very busy all throughout the year, but this time of year, they're, they're extra busy. I mean, they have concerts, they have, you know, stuff like the parade that was just going on. They have their athletic stuff going on. They have all these clubs and presentations. Yeah, so they're super busy, but they always seem like they find time to also help out and be part of the community and, and really appreciate that.
I was at the school of the month at Prairie View, so got some time to hear from the staff there on things going well and some of the challenges that they're facing and just appreciate those that took the time to come to that and also getting tours of the classrooms and seeing some things going on in Prairie View. It's always a good, good experience.
All right, just a couple of recognitions to add on. Max did a phenomenal job covering it, many of the things and obviously our board did as well. But, just wanted to call out, I know Troy did the safety drills report. And if you look at the report and the reference and the context, you'll see that there are multiple police officers that participate in that. And they're, they're there to help the process and the flow as part of the, the drilling and then what happens post-drill and how that engagement interaction works. There are also extra eyes, context and feedback. And the fact that they make time to do that and that our leadership with the police department supports that level of engagement is, is outstanding because we're getting a lot of different people, getting, becoming familiar with our schools, engaging with our staff. So, that's really, really very much appreciated. I was just made aware today that we had, we had a wrestler, I'm not going to name him, but at a tournament this past weekend and the master official there took the time to write a thank you and recognize his sportsmanship. So, this particular wrestler is dominant most of the time, but the way he handled himself in one match in particular, but I'm assuming throughout the entire tournament for his experience, just represented his character as a human being and just really proud of, of him and the program. So, that's an outstanding recognition. And then, the Red Kettle Concert was this month. So, Joanne, Joanne runs point on that. It's a little bit of a stress point for her at times, but that's hosted at the high school. And not only was it really, really well attended and outstanding, but if you've never been to it or seen it, it's pretty awesome for our school district community to look at the amount of staff and alumni that participate in that. So, while that's a community event, like, I mean, it is, it's pretty powerful to see the, the talent and the willingness of people to give and, and come back and engage. And then Greg, thank you. It's, it's, yeah, a lot of stuff going on this, really the past month and a half, two months. So, again, thank you for all of your work, all the feedback that we get from the groups and the community or otherwise is always very positive. So, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was at the Red Kettle Concert too. Nice, nice job.
Thank you. I just want to quickly mention the, the willingness of this district and this community to support something where, you know, there were some other communities there that were coming to look at what we do in hopes of either replicating it in their communities. And they were just so impressed that all of these people from Beaverdam would come together, where nobody, nobody's doing it for themselves, nobody's getting paid, nobody's getting anything personally, and we're just able to do a lot of good. So, it, it was a great day and I appreciate the support of the district to help us make that happen.
I just wanted to thank Troy for that, for the information on the school drills that you did. It's scary to think, you know, that we have to do this, but it's important. And I read the, I read each school's information and I think it triggered, showed a couple locks that need replacing and things like that, which is always helpful for, in the long run. So, good job on, on the report and hopefully, we will never need it, but people know how to do it.
Anybody else? All right.
I move the board recess into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, print one, print C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to discuss specific employees.
Second.
All right, motion of second then to move into closed session. Roll call vote please.
Yes.
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 All right, we will move into closed session and be back temporarily.
Did you forget something?
Not a big one.
All right, we're back in open session. We're good to go?
Yes.
Yep. We're back in open session and we'll move to District Policy and Guidelines.
For leaves of absence, there are a couple for your consideration tonight. I move the board approve the leaves of absence as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve the leaves of absence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Although not the same time. Okay.
We have five appointments on the agenda tonight. Three of them are long-term subs, and I'll go through those first. Olivia Filber, English Language Learner Teacher at the middle school for a long-term sub for, actually she'll be starting in January, but it's for a lead that started on December 9th, and will go through March 24th. We have Sandra Kohler as a Special Education Teacher at Jefferson Elementary School as a long-term sub from January 2nd to March 12th. Luann Manti as a Special Education Teacher in the long-term sub role at Prairie View Elementary from December 2nd to December 20th. And we have two limited-term employment. Deborah Hardman, Special Education Teacher for Prairie View Elementary for January 2nd through the end of the school year. And then Emily Walters, English Language Arts Teacher at the high school, which is a limited-term employment from January 20th until the end of the school year. I move the board approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve the appointments as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Chair, yes.
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 Thank you.
12.4, Board Policy Update. First reading.
Yeah, so the board has a brief in their board packet as well as referencing Board Policy Perspective Update regarding policies 0131.1 and policy 9160 as it relates to possession of alcohol on school grounds connected to outside groups' request to use a facility that only the district has in our community that's not available anywhere else, and the ability to potentially possess alcohol on that facility during non-school day, otherwise known as the summer. So this connects to Legion use, baseball field. It would be for only a particular event or two. The board does have the flexibility to consider such a thing. I talked with legal counsel. There's a couple of different pathways. Oftentimes, if this is done, while not necessarily common, but if this is done, these things are done temporarily. Some districts will do this as it relates to a particular event that might be getting hosted on school district grounds or premises. And as I said, in the case of our community, I think the prospect of considering this, although I'm not passionate either way, really becomes a practical consideration because, you know, it is the only venue like this in the community. There really isn't another option in our city or town. So it's a first reading. I entertain any questions either now or later. But, yeah.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? Because this is very different. We've never had anything like this before, and we really haven't had this discussion before. But if that were to be allowed, if we had the policy stating that it was allowed, would they have to essentially petition us or ask permission for each specific event where they wanted to have that?
Yeah, I would advise that if we went down this pathway, and as you see, there really is a couple of different options. I would probably suggest that the board choose the most restrictive option, particularly at first, and see how things go. And again, we're not authorizing sale of beer or anything like that. It has to do with possession. They're responsible for, you know, all those other realities, and responsible for making sure that they have everything else in place. So, yeah, I lost my train of thought.
So meaning all the responsibilities of being able to sell alcohol, of making sure people are the right age that are purchasing it, that becomes their responsibility. The only thing the district is doing is saying, "You can do this on our premises for this amount of time," and then all liability is theirs.
You can specify the date, the time, or the date, obviously the venue, location, etc., and then the expectation of all the other liability licensing, you know, proper process, etc. That's all on the other entity's responsibility.
I have a question on like, actually having on the premises, like, can you restrict it to it can't go past, say, the football bathrooms or?
So, yeah, and again-
You don't want them wandering all over.
Exactly, exactly. I think, you know, given this, and again, I talked with legal counsel, also talked with the chief of police, and there's kind of some recommended ways that that would be done, just in general. So like, you know, wristband and like a tent area, etc., those types of things. And I think that they would be, I think the police department would be very much working with the American Legion on that effort, particularly initially, to set that up. And I know that whatever we wanted, or however we wanted it to look like, where they reset that expectation, they'd have to do it too.
And if we did have a group that did this, and we didn't feel like it was being, or the police notified us, or however we found out that it was being administered properly, we do have the right to decline that request.
Absolutely, yep. And I think, I think there's just, I think initially, the more restrictive pathway, at least initially, probably makes the most sense. And I think that also provides ability for the board to, you know, say no to other groups. And again, it's different because of who that group is, and the fact that they already have a license, and they already do these types of things and other, because the overarching group entity is the American Legion. If that makes sense.
So your most restrictive way would be which way?
I would say-
It's as the, to give the authority to the superintendent or the designee to take the action to modify the prohibition.
I disagree with that. I think it should be put on the board.
Correct. It's the second one.
The second one would be, the board could take action.
And then it would specify so as to authorize where you'd see that Legion.
So two choices are you-
Two choices are you basically put it on either myself or the designee to interpret and apply with any which group, or whoever the group is, they have to bring it. Essentially, it comes, it'll come through me or whoever the designee is, but then it ultimately has to go to the board.
Yeah, that's what you're trying to leave.
But the board policy actually says the board could, the option, giving the superintendent, or the board suspend the prohibition against alcohol possession so as to allow the board to authorize a group or organization to possess alcohol on district premises.
For a specific event?
Why is that less than-
More restrictive.
Why is that more- Yeah, you got nine people making the decision instead of one. And it insulates our superintendent, in my opinion, you know?
So essentially, it would have to come like, not a field trip request, but it would have to come as a request.
But that, that changes the policy practically.
Either one changes the policy.
Either one does. I just, I have one thing for us to consider. Maybe we should throw this back to committee and have some further discussion before we move it into second reading. I mean, it sounds like there's some details we maybe need to step through and talk through.
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, I'm actually fine with either way. The only thing about being most, I mean, I get most restrictive, but I'm just thinking like, and it probably wouldn't fall within a month timeline, but I'm just thinking like if a request comes in, like, and that they want to do something like three weeks later, well, you can't, right, because we're not going to have a board meeting until the fourth week. Right? So you maybe fall into that timeline, but at the end of the day, I mean, it's probably far and few between, and I'm either, I'm fine either way. And I'm actually supportive for two reasons. Number one is, you know, as we continue to ask for the community's support, right? It's obviously for the education of our students, number one, but it's also to support the community. And being that this is really the only baseball diamond that the community has, I mean, it'd be awesome if the, if, you know, there were other options in Beaver Dam, but there aren't other options in Beaver Dam. And so because there aren't any options in Beaver Dam, and we say that we continuously look to expand spaces for community use, I think this would be a good opportunity to do that. And in addition to that, I'm always a proponent to setting ourselves up so that we can host large events. And if we can big, if we can bring state legion in, you know, within the next two years for a state tournament, I think that'd be great for Beaver Dam.
Yeah, I also, I'm not opposed to doing it. I just want to make sure that we choose the right way to do it. So I think maybe, along with Mary said, we should discuss that, those options, and make sure that we're in agreement on the best path forward.
Yeah, I would definitely like clarity about interior versus exterior space. Because I certainly would have hesitation allowing, like, let's say, a group to say they want to use our cafeteria and fieldhouse for the same type of activity. So, I mean, that would be concerning to me in that scenario.
I think the time of, you know, year might matter too. I mean, those are things that, you know, I think, not that the summer, but it's different. It's not actively used campus by school-sponsored activities at that particular time of year. We can certainly add those restrictions. I do also want to make sure that the board knows that-
Did you forget something?
Not a big one.
All right, we're back in open session. We're good to go?
Yes.
Yep. We're back in open session and we'll move to District Policy Guidelines.
For leaves of absence, there are a couple for your consideration tonight. I move the board approve the leaves of absence as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve the leaves of absence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. Okay.
We have five appointments on the agenda tonight. Three of them are long-term subs, and I'll go through those first. Olivia Filber, English Language Learner Teacher at the middle school, for a long-term sub for, actually she'll be starting in January, but it's for a lead that started on December 9th, and will go through March 24th. We have Sandra Kohler as a special education teacher. Jefferson Elementary School is a long-term sub from January 2nd to March 12th. Luann Mantai as a special education teacher in the long-term sub role at Prairie View Elementary from December 2nd to December 20th. And we have two limited-term employment. Deborah Hardman, Special Education Teacher for Prairie View Elementary for January 2nd through the end of the school year. And then Emily Walters, English Language Arts Teacher at the high school, which is a limited-term employment from January 20th until the end of the school year. I move the board approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve the appointments as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Chairman?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
12.4, Board Policy Update. First reading.
Yeah, so the board has a brief in their board packet, as well as referencing board policy perspective update regarding policies 0131.1 and policy 9160 as it relates to possession of alcohol on school grounds connected to outside groups' request to use a facility that only the district has in our community. That's not available anywhere else. And the ability to potentially possess alcohol on that facility during non-school day, otherwise known as the summer. So this connects to Legion use, baseball field. It would be for only a particular event or two. The board does have the flexibility to consider such a thing. I talked with legal counsel. There's a couple of different pathways. Oftentimes, if this is done, while not necessarily common, but if this is done, these things are done temporarily. Some districts will do this as it relates to a particular event that might be getting hosted on school district grounds or premises. And as I said, in the case of our community, I think the prospect of considering this, although I'm not passionate either way, really becomes a practical consideration because, you know, it is the only venue like this in the community. There really isn't another option in our city or town. So it's a first reading. I entertain any questions, either now or later. But, yeah.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? Because this is very different. We've never had anything like this before, and we really haven't had this discussion
Sure.
before. But if that were to be allowed, if we had the policy stating that it was allowed, would they have to essentially like petition us or ask permission for each specific event where they wanted to have that?
Yeah, I would advise that if we went down this pathway, and as you see, there really is a couple of different options. I would probably suggest that the board choose the most restrictive option, particularly at first, and see how things go. And again, we're not authorizing sale of beer or anything like that. It has to do with possession. They're responsible for, you know, all those other realities, and responsible for making sure that they have everything else in place. So, yeah, I lost my train of thought.
So meaning all the responsibilities of being able to sell alcohol, of making sure people are the right age that are purchasing it, that becomes their responsibility. The only thing the district is doing is saying, "You can do this on our premises
You can possess it.
for this amount of time, and then all liability is theirs."
You can specify the date, the time, or the date, obviously the venue, location, et cetera, and then the expectation of all the other liability licensing, you know, proper process, et cetera. That's all on the other entity's responsibility.
I have a question on like, actually having on the premises, like, can you restrict it to, it can't go past, say, the football bathrooms or?
So, yeah, and again-
You don't want them wandering all over.
Exactly, exactly. I think, you know, given this, and again, I talked with legal counsel, I also talked with the chief of police, and there's kind of some recommended ways that that would be done, just in general. So, like, you know, wristband and like a tent area, et cetera, those types of things. And I think that they would be, I think the police department would be very much working with the American Legion on that effort, particularly initially, to set that up. And I know that whatever we wanted, or however we wanted it to look like, wherever we set that expectation, they'd have to move it to.
And if we did have a group that did this, and we didn't feel like it was being, or the police notified us, or however we found out that it was being administered properly, we do have the right to decline that request.
Absolutely, yep.
So.
And I think, I think there's just, I think initially, the more restrictive pathway, at least initially, probably makes the most sense. And I think that also provides ability for the board to, you know, say no to other groups. And again, it's different because of who that group is, and the fact that they already have a license, and they already do these types of things and other, because the overarching group entity is the American Legion. If that makes sense.
So your most restrictive way would be, which way?
I would say-
It's as to give the authority to the superintendent or the designated to take the action to modify the prohibition.
I disagree with that. I think it should be put on the board.
Correct. It's the second one.
The second one would be-
Or-
The board could take action.
And then it would specify, so as to authorize, where you'd see that Legion.
So two choices are you-
Two choices are you basically put it on either myself or the designated to interpret and apply with any which group, or whoever the group is, they have to bring it. Essentially, it comes, it'll come through me or whoever the designated is, but then it ultimately has to go to the board.
Yeah, that's where it should be.
But the board policy actually says, the board could, the option, giving the superintendent, or the board suspend the prohibition against alcohol possession so as to allow the board to authorize a group or organization to possess alcohol on district premises. I mean-
More specific event?
Yeah.
Why is that less than-
Well, because it's more restrictive.
Yeah, you got nine people making the decision instead of one. And it insulates our superintendent, in my opinion, you know?
So essentially, it would have to come like a, not a field trip request, but it would have to come as a request.
But that-
The policy that allows you to do it.
That changes the policy practically.
Either one changes the policy.
Either one does. I just, I have one thing for us to consider. Maybe we should throw this back to committee and have some further discussion before we move it into second reading. I mean, it sounds like there's some details we maybe need to step through and talk through.
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, I'm actually fine with either way. The only thing about being most, I mean, I get most restrictive, but I'm just thinking like, and it probably wouldn't fall within a month timeline, but I'm just thinking like if a request comes in, like, and that they want to do something like three weeks later, well, you can't, right, because we're not going to have a board meeting until the fourth week. Right? So you maybe fall into that timeline, but at the end of the day, I mean, it's probably far and few between, and I'm either, I'm fine either way. And I'm actually supportive for two reasons. Number one is, you know, as we continue to ask for the community's support, right, it's obviously for for the education of our students, number one, but it's also to support the community. And being that this is really the only baseball diamond that the community has, I mean, it'd be awesome if, you know, there were other options in Beaver Dam, but there aren't other options in Beaver Dam. And so because there aren't any options in Beaver Dam, and we say that we continuously look to expand spaces for community use, I think this would be a good opportunity to do that. And in addition to that, I'm always a proponent to setting ourselves up so that we can host large events. And if we can big, if we can bring a state legion in, you know, within the next two years for a state tournament, I think that'd be great for Beaver Dam.
Yeah, I also, I'm not opposed to doing it. I just want to make sure that we choose the right way to do it. So I think maybe along with Mary said, we should discuss that, those options, and make sure that we're in agreement on the best path forward.
Yeah, I would definitely like clarity about interior versus exterior space. Because I certainly would have hesitation allowing, like, let's say, a group to say they want to use our cafeteria and fieldhouse for the same type of activity.
Sure.
So, I mean, that would be concerning to me in that scenario.
I think the time of, you know, year might matter, too. I mean, those are things that, you know, I think, not that the summer, but it's different. It's not actively used campus by school-sponsored activities at that particular time of year. We can certainly add those restrictions. I do also want to make sure that the board knows that I did in conversation with legal talk about, you know, there is a potential other pathway, but it's very complicated. And I would argue, not disingenuous, but, you know, where you basically identify a section of land or property that would be moved into, I don't know what term I'm thinking of, but- No, no, that would be moved into like a temporary status under a different entity. So, but just so that then they can do whatever they want. But in talking with legal, other districts do this. Sometimes it's for black tie fundraisers, actually indoor, once a year. The PTOs and boosters put it on. Again, it's very controlled, but there are said pathways.
Is there, so obviously, this primary request came from American Legion. Is there a specific timeline that they have to provide information?
Well, you know, if we recall, and, you know, sometimes things are presented with more, maybe a little bit of urgency. But I certainly think that patience will prevail with this group. I think the board needs to be thoughtful about it. But I think they'd love to have more context sometime in January, if possible, but I, you know, I don't think that's a deal breaker, per se. And I also don't think the board should ever feel rushed.
So can we come to operations on January 27?
Isn't this for baseball-type things? Why would they need to have to have it quickly in January?
Only because if they're going to bring a state tournament in, there's a lot of planning. There's a lot of planning that goes into that.
They plan that they'd be using the facilities. It doesn't necessarily track that it also has to be about the alcohol.
Yeah, again, I'm not passionate either way. I'm just presenting the pathway forward if the board wants to consider that.
Could we move this to January 27th Operations Committee and then bring it back in February to our board meeting? Is that all right with you?
I think if the board feels good about that, that's a good path.
Okay.
It provides more conversation.
Yeah, okay.
And then I guess what I would ask, and then too with that, is that the specific questions, I did write down yours, but other specific things that might pop into people's heads, if they could share that with me or-
Do we need that in a motion?
Marge, but I think Marge would prefer if they landed with me and then I can just write. If you have specific questions, you want me to try to answer, otherwise you might just bring up a bunch of more questions that I'm not able to answer. And I do like to tuck in quick little context answers with legal when I'm talking about other topics. It's a better use of tax dollars. So rather than having a whole separate conversation about this.
So I'm just going to move, as estimate this in a motion that prior to the second reading, this moves to committee meeting on January 27th for operations, and then can be brought back in the February meeting for second reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second then to move it to committee in January, brought back in February to the full board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right, moving on to other business.
I move for payment and claims in the amount of $3,875,569.55.
Second.
All right, with a motion and a second, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Boots?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, ask for a motion for adjournment?
So move.